All right, I'll call to order the Board of Franklin County Commissioners meeting for Wednesday, December 20th.
Commissioner Howard?
Present.
Vice Chair Renaud?
Present.
Chair Weymeyer?
Present.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
If you will please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mind stepping in?
Father, we come to you this morning, God, and, Lord, as we head into this time of celebration, this holiday, God, we pray, God, for those that travel, God, your hand of protection upon them, Lord, as they come and as they go. And, God, those who have to work, God, we ask that you would be with them and bless their families as well, for every county employee, every city employee, God, all those who have to work to provide the services that we need and expect to have, God, when we need them, Lord, we ask that you would be with them, God, keep your hand of protection upon them. God, we ask, Lord, that you would just give us the wisdom to make the decisions today, God, that need to be made for the benefit of all and the benefit of the county. And, Father, we give you the praise and the glory. Amen.
In the correspondence and organizational business today, we will be receiving a presentation from Services for the Elderly.
Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you about Services for the Elderly. I invited this morning our dispatcher, Regina Barnhart, to attend, in case you had any questions that she might be able to answer. And Joe Rich is here representing our Board of Directors. And I also have with us Shannon Ossity from the Area Agency on Aging. I have asked her to share a story with you about a client that has tremendously benefited from our services. I did bring a couple of handouts, if that's all right, I'll go ahead and give those to you. The first one is a ridership report that compares the years of 2015, 16, and 17. And you can see that we had a tremendous gain between 15 and 16, and we're on track in 17 to do a comparable number of rides and miles as we did in 16. We feel like we provide an important service to the Franklin County community, and thanks to grants from KDOT and money from the county, we've been providing that service for more than 20 years. 2017, the demand has continued strong, and while Franklin County now has two taxi services available, they're not an option for many or even most of the clients that we serve. The cost is prohibitive for most of our clients, and neither taxi service is handicapped accessible, which is, of course, a big issue for many of our clients. I'm going to ask Shannon to come up at this time and give you a testimony about one of her clients that's benefiting currently.
Well, good morning. Again, my name is Shannon Ossity. I've been with the Area Agency on Aging for about four years now, and prior to that, I have over 20 years of experience with people with Alzheimer's. Really, I just wanted to share with you, I brought on a client about four years ago when I first came on, and I'll just say that her name is Mrs. X. She, at that time, she was just needing a little bit of in-home services. She had macular degeneration, and that was starting to impair her driving. So we brought her on as a client. Unforeseen things started to happen, of course. She lost her only son due to a heart attack and gained guardianship of her 10-year-old grandson at that time due to his mother's not wanting to parent any longer. So here she is, you know, she's 80, I want to make sure I get the, she is 84 years old now, and her health has deteriorated. She's been taken care of. Her grandson is now 14 years old, and she was told last month that she needs to start doing dialysis. And the dialysis has far exceeded, even though it's $44 per month, that is out of her budget because of her caring for her grandson also on her limited income. Through Area Agency on Aging, we have found some funding to help her with the $44 per month, but this is just one of the incidences that are happening so often in the clients that we serve. And I just want to give, I spoke with, and she does live in Wellsville also. I called Davida yesterday just for some really quick facts for you. They have 24 chairs, and so they do two shifts of 12 chairs each. And of those 24 chairs, 22 of them are over the age of 60. So it's just, I know that at least six of the individuals are receiving transportation, and there are only two shifts that are done, one at 5:30 in the morning and one at 10:30 in the morning. So it's just, you know, I think my plea really is just for you to think about with the transportation and, you know, just the things that Sharon are presenting to you today. And I certainly appreciate your time, and thank you very much.
This year, we've experienced a good and bad news situation. The good news is we continue to provide essential quality services to the residents of Franklin County. The testimonials from those who use, appreciate, and depend on this service are numerous, and I know Regina could tell you lots of stories. Thanks to continued low gas prices and newer vehicles, we have operated well below our projected budget for maintenance and gasoline for the last three years. This has allowed us to expand our medical transportation to include VA clinics in Paola and Garnet while continuing service to Olathe, Lawrence, and the Topeka VA. We do that for medical treatment only. In keeping with KDOT policies, we do not take our KDOT vehicles out of Franklin County. This means that shopping trips are provided only to Franklin County businesses. Should we elect to drive our KDOT vehicles out of Franklin County for any reason, we would have to take them out for every reason. For that reason, we take only our agency-owned vehicles out of county, and we do that for medical services only. The bad news is that for the first time since we began getting KDOT money, we did not get the full amount of money we requested in our 2018 grant. That was because our fuel and maintenance costs were so much lower than we anticipated, we did not expend all of our grant money in 2017. We are not a 2018 grant year currently. So therefore, our 2018 allocation was reduced. In addition, when we requested our 2018 budget from the county, you did not give us $15,000 of what we had requested from you. And so you can see, we are headed towards the perfect storm. The second chart that I gave you shows the county money that we've received since 2008, when we got more money than we're from the county than we are currently getting, and that's because in 2008, we were actually a department of the county, and so our employees got county benefits and so forth, which, of course, drove the cost. So we spun off and became a private 501(c)(3) at that time, and that reduced our costs, as you can see. But as we have grown, we have added benefits in order to attract and keep quality employees. Regina has been our dispatcher for nine years and does a tremendous job. We were able to do that because of the savings we have had in other areas. In 2018, we will be asking you for an increase in mill levy money, and we hope that you will seriously consider increasing that. We would like to ask you to consider doing a ride-along and visiting with our staff so that you can see firsthand what we're doing on a daily basis. We are considering whether additional businesses in Proximity Park will mean an increased need for transportation to and from work. We have been analyzing whether a fixed route coinciding with shift changes for the distribution centers here in Franklin County would be feasible or not, and whether or not there is enough demand to support such services. Currently, it does not seem that there is enough demand with additional employees added in the southeast corner of the county. That may change, but currently, we're not anticipating adding that, but we do think long-term that that may be something we need to add. We hope that you will consider the part that public transportation plays in the growth and development of Franklin County, and consider carefully the dollars invested in providing this service to the residents of our county, and consider whether more dollars are justified in assuring that this vital service will remain viable in Franklin County. We hope that our service will help our residents continue to thrive and grow in Franklin County. I would invite you to call Regina to schedule a time to do a ride-along, and that number is 242-7440. Of course, we operate Monday through Friday, except next week, we will operate on Sunday because our dialysis patients will have to have transportation that day, and then we will be closed on Christmas. So if you have any questions, Regina or Joe or I would be happy to try and answer them.
How much was your grant cut for 2018?
I believe it's about $15,000 less than we anticipated. And we have not got our allocation for 2019 yet.
Sharon, are you anticipating trying to increase the donation for ridership?
We did increase our, we doubled our donation for out-of-county medical transportations this year, and we have not talked about increasing them within the county. It is currently a dollar within the city limits and $2 within the county. I think if you did a ride-along and you see the people that use the service, you might understand better the board's reluctance to increase that.
What's your hour of operation?
Eight to three?
Eight to three.
Eight to three. You can get our dispatcher well before eight, though, but. And we do, you know, when someone has, like a dialysis patient, which is a lot of our transportation, they may be scheduled to be done by two, but if they're not done until four, we stay and take them home. And if we take somebody to an appointment at a medical center and they're not done, we don't leave them and say, "Good luck."
I know, I've seen the van up at the VA in Topeka. Seems like it takes a lot of time out of somebody's, your people's day.
It does.
Doing those long-distance transports.
And we attempted to become a Medicaid transportation provider about, back when Kansas went with the Can Care system, and after about $500, we were no closer to being an approved provider than we were when we started. And so we do provide Medicaid transportation at the donation price, and we could get more if we could get that, if Medicaid could get their system to work. I really think the problem is that their system doesn't work, and people end up using us because if they were to get Medicaid to transport them into dialysis, for example, they might have to go at 7:30 in the morning for a 10:30 appointment, and then they may have to stay there until 5 o'clock in the evening to get home. And I don't know if you've ever known anyone that was on dialysis, but you don't just feel perky and feel like hanging out after you get done. It's not a great experience for people.
What's your age of your vehicles?
Well, we've got one coming in, we've got several 2009. I think we replaced three vehicles at one time, and that was when we saw our maintenance go way down. We got grants to replace those. KDOT pays for 80% of a replacement vehicle. It's really our agency-owned vehicles that are getting aged, added a lot of miles, because we don't get any money to replace those. That comes out of our budget when we choose to replace those. We can keep the vehicles when we do get new KDOT money, and we're supposed to have a new vehicle coming by the end of 2017, which is, I think, next week. And that will replace one of our higher-mileage vehicles. And we could keep that higher-mileage vehicle and use it as an agency vehicle, but the one we're replacing is a bus, and they're just terribly expensive to operate. And we are kind of moving away from those, and KDOT is offering more fuel-efficient vehicles in their replacements. Colton, did you have a question?
Do you have any idea why board's looking at expanding services to businesses in midst of money troubles?
Well, we started looking at that because KDOT has a grant that is, that we could apply for in January that is for, is related to work, transportation. And they, the grant would allow us to buy another vehicle and so forth, and so we thought, well, we should at least see. I had understood that getting people to Amazon and Jet is an issue. The problem is that if we elected to get the grant to take people to Amazon or Jet to work, then that opens the door, and we would have to take our vehicles, we'd have to take people to Oak Park Mall if that's where they wanted to go shopping, and that's just not feasible. If we start taking people out of county for all kinds of shopping, you know, it hurts our local businesses, and the, we just couldn't, I don't, we don't think we could keep up. We just don't think we could make that work. So we go out of county for medical and hope that those are services that people really need to go out for, and so.
Any other questions for Sharon?
Sharon, where are you operating out of right now?
I'm sorry?
Where are you operating out of right now?
The transportation.
Where are you located at right now?
114 West Second.
Okay. I think it's on First Street there for a while.
It's in the Elks Building.
Oh, okay.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Don't see any public comment? All right. Consent agenda, consent agenda today would be to consider approving the commission's study session minutes for our meeting on December 11th and our regular meeting minutes on December 13th. Claim vouchers, the amount of $556,710.59. There's a special claim voucher related to the radio project, an amount of $4,982 even. And we have tax change orders, an amount of negative $450.50. So I motion to approve the consent agenda. Make the motion. Shout out for a second.
Was that Roy?
Roy.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. Our first item business is to consider approving budget year-end transfers.
As you all are aware, at the end of every year, we do our budget transfers that are scheduled in our regular budget, and so I've reviewed the budget transfers that were planned for this year. I've discussed it with the department heads that are in charge of these budgets. We did do some changes that we'll talk about here in just a little bit with the budget amendment. Nick's transfer is substantially more than what we had originally budgeted for, and the amendment that you're going to review, provided that it's approved, would provide for this, which would be $400,000 to ambulance equipment. Noxious weed special equipment was not budgeted for, but I did speak with our auditor Rodney yesterday, and Jim would like to go ahead and do the $5,000 transfer that we've done every year to the equipment fund, and Rodney has indicated that that's perfectly fine as long as the budget authority is there, which it is. And that's, everything else was pretty much scheduled in our 2017 budget. Oh, one other one, Health Department is more because they have bid out their project to do their renovations, and the project's not going to get off the ground this year. And to make sure that we have the money available, we'll go ahead and transfer that to their reserve fund, so when the project expenses are incurred, then we will just pay it out of reserve and therefore not eating any of their budget authority for 2018.
Any questions about the year-end transfers? Anyone like to make a motion to approve them?
Make a motion to approve the resolution for year-end budgeted transfers.
Okay.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. Next up is consider approval for neighborhood revitalization applications.
You guys participate in the Neighborhood Revitalization Program with the City of Ottawa and USD 290. Charlotte Newkirk at the city, who kind of manages this program for them, has sent me over four applications of projects that have submitted their application. They've been reviewed by the committee and deemed that they're eligible for the program. These projects aren't complete yet, and they haven't got their official certificate of occupancy yet, so you guys would just be approving that if these do come to a completion, then they would then be placed in the program. I can answer any questions about any of them that you have. I believe Colton sits on the.
Questions about the copies in the Neighborhood Revitalization Applications? Would anyone like to make a motion to approve?
Make a motion, we approve the Neighborhood Revitalization Applications for 114 South Main, 204 South Walnut, 717 South Cherry, and 831 South Cedar.
Is there a second?
Let's have one question about those.
Okay.
Business on Wall Street, or not, Walnut Street, it's already been remodeled and everything is, is, I guess it's the old antique mall, right?
Yeah.
It's already been all done and set.
The application is made a long time ago, just takes a long time to get to us.
All construction, I don't believe, is completed.
Yeah, I don't believe all of the work is complete. They have, I believe, according to Charlotte, they have a temporary occupancy permit while they wait to finish some things like very specific windows that had to be obtained for the historical society criteria, so they're still waiting on some things that took longer than they anticipated, so.
I'll second out of them.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. For item business is a budget amendment.
So as I just mentioned, when we discussed the year-end transfers, the ambulance department, as you all know, as discussed by Nick throughout the year, he's had increased revenue above what we thought that he would have, and then that was budgeted, and so we are making this amendment for the ambulance department to be able to transfer some more money to their equipment reserve so they can keep their equipment current and fund some things that aren't within their normal operating budget. Additionally, the Health Department, we made a precautionary adjustment to their budget. They also had some additional revenue this year that was not budgeted for, just some residual money coming in off of their transfer to the new system. And so to make sure that we had enough to cover the budget transfer that we're going to do for the renovations, we went ahead and increased that also. And I'd be happy to answer any questions about that.
Do you have to have a motion to open the hearing, is that what you have to do?
Yes.
All right. Should be.
If there's no more comment, I'll make a motion that we open the budget hearing to have public comment on the proposed budget amendments.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Hearing's open. Are there any comments? Seeing done. Would you ask for a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? I would like to make a motion to approve the amendment outlined by Clerk to this 2017 budget.
I'll make a motion, we approve the proposed budget amendment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes, thank you. Next up is the rezoning application.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
Good morning.
The item that we have on this morning from the Planning Commission is the rezoning of approximately five acres from an A1 agricultural zone to the RE residential estate zone. This property is located in the Monah area on the south side of 68, almost across from the high school. I think most of you are aware of the location. The Planning Commission did consider this matter earlier this year and have forwarded a recommendation to you to approve the rezoning request. The purpose for the rezoning is to allow the grandson to acquire this five acres and build a new home. So the Planning Commission felt that this was in keeping with our provisions of our comprehensive plan as well as our zoning regulations, and I have directed staff to present this matter to you for your consideration to approve the rezoning and to direct staff to amend the official county zoning map accordingly. I have nothing further to add unless any of you have questions.
There are no questions for Larry. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the rezoning application?
Make a motion, we approve the rezoning application 1709-1529.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. Thanks, Larry. Next up is consider a rate adjustment for EMS services.
Good morning, Commission. About every two years, we look at our rate adjustment, and I want to talk just a little bit about how rate adjustments happen before we get into the, what we're here for. So when we go to our billing meetings, our rates are looked at in a regional area. So like in our region, we have Anderson County, Coffee County, I think, gets lumped into that, Miami County, Douglas County, and Medicare, Medicaid, and Blue Cross base their rate adjustments for ambulance transports on what those are. There for a while, we had Johnson County in here also, they've kind of bumped that out since we're rural, and they use those. At those meetings, they make recommendations on what rates should be, so we're leaving money on the table. Are they unable to adjust their rates because one's lower? We neatoresly run at the threshold. I usually don't jack our rates up high, that's why we only do it about every two years. on the resolution, you can see that the comparisons that we did with Miami, Douglas, and Anderson, those are the ones that are right, pretty much the straight. It gives us to get out of Miami County's call volumes comparable to ours. Douglas County's lumped into what our rates are, and then Anderson County's a hospital-based ambulance service, so they fall into that too. So when you look at ours, our ALS emergence, $575. Miami County for ALS is $725. Douglas County just done a rate increase last year, and they bumped theirs up to $699. And Anderson County is $950. So you can see we're considered quite a bit lower than they are. So I don't want to come in and do a major rate increase, because honestly, we're doing okay as far as our funding on it. We just have to be able to support the rate increases for Medicare and that stuff. So what we've looked at is a 10% across the board update this year, and then look at probably somewhere around a 10% next year, which will bring us up and see where everybody else is at, so we're not making a major adjustment. Some things you will notice is different with us, and like Miami County, Douglas County's kind of adopted it, is our ALS non-emergent rate stays the same as our emergent rate. Miami County has chosen to change theirs, and so has Anderson County. Thought process behind that used to be, if you run emergent, you got paid more. Honestly, you're using the same supplies for an ALS non-emergent as you are for an ALS call. We don't bill for supplies. So any supply that comes out of our supplies, we are lumped into this fund. To give you a quick idea of where some of this comes from, if you have a cardiac arrest and you choose to bone drill, and that bone drill needle went from $90 to $180 apiece. So if you look at our ALS emergent, which that's what we're going to use, or the ALS II, $180, that's already out of the pocket. So now you're narrowing this down, so we got to keep those rates adjusted appropriate. So before we get into the resolution, do you have any questions on the rate adjustments that I can talk about or to help understand?
10% seemed kind of shocking at first, but then you see we're still down towards the bottom of surrounding counties as far as rate. My, my only question would become how that affects those who are unable to pay, and does that increase your offset, or those who have trouble collecting from that, I guess?
Anytime you raise rates, it puts you above to start out on the basics and move up. You move above what Medicare and them are going to pay. And we're already above Medicare, but we're right at Blue Cross. So you hit the write-off. So you will see adjustments in our write-offs, because Medicare, Medicaid are only going to pay this amount. So anything above that will be mandatory write-off. With that, yes, our uninsured patients, those do get hit with the bill, and we're in the process now of looking at some options that other places have, like the hospital, and if you have an income, they make adjustments. There's a lot of work into doing something like that, and you have to have a board and stuff to help make those determinations. But we do, one thing that we do offer that some services don't, is we offer some pretty generous payment options. You know, you have somebody that comes in that, you know, can't make the big payments. We work with payments on people. We have people that pay $50 every month until their bill's paid off. Some of them may not be able to pay that much, but they are, every day they come in, or every month when they get paid, they come in and make those payments. So we work through that. Like I said, rates are one of those things that's not fun to adjust, because you do, you hit some people who can't pay in the pocket to be able to appease the insurance companies for what they have to do, so.
I like the idea of looking into a sliding fee scale, the fact that we'll work with a multinational corporation or the state of Kansas, but not a low-income individual as far as rates and terms.
And the other thing that we have done, if we do get payments, we don't send collections, as we've talked about, any collections that we do have to go after, it goes to the state set-off program for all residents. And those are for people, most of the time, those people don't respond back to us. We send out three letters, three bills, don't get anything. They go to it, three or four years later, they have their, then they call and say, I didn't have an ambulance bill. We try to follow the policies we have to get a hold of them. And if we don't have social security numbers, out-of-town people, that's when we do utilize the collection agency on those. So we do work for our citizens to make sure we're not throwing them out, for, like a better term. But yeah, the sliding scale is something that we have looked at. It's just a lot to get started.
How's this compared to helicopter ride?
We're a lot less than a helicopter. I think to start a helicopter up's a $10,000 bill right now. And then mileage and all that, I know some people have said they're up to $20,000 for a helicopter ride. So we're, we're still significantly lower than that. And honestly, we haven't flown enough people to have any feedback. When we were flying 40-some people, we would get complaints about the helicopter rides. We haven't had anything like that since we've put our new policies in place.
People that are flying now, sufficient to say, are, are about enough shape that...
The only real helicopters we come in now is Children's Mercy coming into the hospital. I think when they didn't have the helicopter pad here, we did three transports, and all three of those were Children's Mercy coming in from the airport, so. We, in the field, we had last year, or this year, we haven't flown anybody, and we've had good success. And with RANSAV being a Level Four trauma center and really stepping their game up with that, it decreases that need more, so.
Any other questions for Nick? Are we ready to make a motion to approve the 10% rate adjustment for EMS services for 2018?
I'll make the motion that we approve the rate increase, and again, noting that Nick has talked about how they handle those that are willing to work with us on a plan and look at that.
Second.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Our next item of business, consider approving entering into agreement for Economic Development Services with the City of Ottawa and Franklin County Economic Development.
As you all know, we enter into an agreement every year with FCDC for the provision of Economic Development Services. In front of you is the 2018 agreement. It's substantially similar to the 2017 agreement and those that came before that. The amount in the contract is $64,375, which is, Janet could verify this, but I believe right where it's been. I've asked James to be here this morning, and I would like for him to come up and address the board for any questions that you may have, so.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Like Derek said, this is the contract that's been used in previous years as well, too. It's the exact same contract that the City of Ottawa should be approving at their commission meeting this morning as well, too, here in a few minutes. So I can answer any questions that you guys may have about it.
Price we determined during our budget process?
Yep.
Is this basically an agreement for you to operate on our behalf for?
Yep, exactly.
Well, and to be clear, I can answer any questions you have about the contract, just more if you have questions about...
Just summarizing what we're doing here.
What 18 looks like for him, or what his priorities are, now might be a good time to ask him those questions.
And just as a reminder to the Commission and the public, you know, FCDC Franklin County Development Council is a public-private partnership. We receive about 35% of our funding from Franklin County, 35% of our funding from the City of Ottawa, and then that last 30% is made up from private investment through member investors, businesses within the community, sometimes individuals that personally invest within FCDC. And that gives us our total budget each year.
We don't provide any in-kind services, do we? Space, secretary, nothing, do we?
No, not at this point.
I've seen some big equipment out there at the, where the Holiday Inn Express is going to go, or they're going to get started doing something there?
They actually already have. They started moving dirt on Monday, I think, is when they started. So they've been working out there the past few days. So that project is, is finally starting to take off. As we know, it's, it's been in the works for, for quite a while, but these things take a little bit of time sometimes, so.
Drive out that way.
So as far as time and effort from you and your office, most of the coordination and trying to get everybody together to develop the actual land at the industrial park is, that ball's rolling. So you'd be moving on towards marketing and trying to attract a new business there. Of course, that's just part of what you do, but...
Yes, absolutely. Back really at the beginning of 2017, and, and, you know, there's obviously been several updates along the way. FCDC did approve a four-year marketing plan for Proximity Park. The first year of that marketing plan was a lot of foundational type work that needed to be done, as far as redoing the website, branding the park as Proximity Park. If you remember at the beginning of the year, we didn't have a name for it, or a logo or anything like that. Also, along with that, marketing collateral, things of that nature. And so those items have all been completed. There's a few odds and ends that we're still, you know, wrapping up that'll probably get done at the beginning of 2018, but then we'll move into year two of the marketing plan for 2018. The, really, the biggest piece of that will be, starting in 2018, a contract with Statebook, which is a online service that is used solely by site selectors to get data and evaluate sites throughout the country. Actually started that process of getting that set up yesterday. There's, like I said, there's a few odds and ends on the marketing collateral end of things that are in the process of, of getting wrapped up. And then really, a lot of it is, is me getting out there, meeting with these people, whether it be various industry-specific conferences and trade shows for the target market industries that we're trying to lure to Proximity Park, working with our regional partners at the Kansas Department of Commerce, and KCADC, and KC Smartport, and then also just setting up one-on-one meetings with potential developers and company contacts, real estate, professional site selectors, things of that nature. And so that continues to move forward really rather smoothly. We've really not ran into any issues with it at this point, so.
Any other questions for anybody? Would someone like to make a motion to enter into the agreement for Economic Development Services? Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
Thank you, James.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Seventh item of business, consider approving a change order relating to the new radio system. Alan Ratcliffe, our emergency management directors here, fills in on details.
Good morning.
Morning, Alan.
This is a change order for a piece of equipment for dispatch that we did not have in place when we did the original contract. It's a recorder. It says on here that it's an IP logger. It's actually the recorder for all of the radio traffic on the system. Currently, the one that we're using is an older one that is being replaced with this nice system. There's two parts to the system, one side for the phones, and then one side for the actual radio system. This is the side for the radio system. It involves the logger and recorder, and then also two servers for everything to be stored on that. And all of it then works with our radio system. And if you'll notice, they got a copy of the change order also, Derek. Besides the, the cost for the logger, there's also, I requested, they gave us the, the option for five years of maintenance, and I asked for it, since it's tied to our system and is actually part of the system, for 10 years of maintenance to be locked in for us like the rest of our system is. So this would be a change order on top of our original contract.
So when the original contract was being done, did we not know we were going to need this, or...
At the time, we were under the understanding that we had everything we needed, and I found out about three weeks after we did the contract that that was not the case, that we needed this additional piece of equipment.
So you think there's going to be some more additional things pop up we don't know about?
I hope not. I can tell you that right now, I can't foresee any, but I'm not going to say 100% that we don't have something, but I, I don't know of anything right now.
We did build a little bit of money in there, in the contingency for unforeseen things, you know, with our tower sites, and, you know, we've had to do a little fencing work out there to make sure that our sites are secure, a little bit of rewiring and stuff like that. So we've used a little bit of that, but we still have some money that is in contingency. But this is dispatch equipment, and so this, this piece of equipment will be paid out of the dispatch money that we, not the dispatch budget, but the 911 telephone funds that we receive.
Pretty well dug into the project now, too, so I guess...
Yeah, we're, we're actually, to give you an idea, we have, as Janet said, there's been a couple things that have been a little bit more than what we thought. As we dig into this, what I'm finding is we're doing a little bit of cleanup work also. Where are all of our equipment sitting at dispatch? For instance, the other day, they found we have three coax cables that run to nowhere, that were just left there. So we're trying to clean things up as we go also. To where, and security is also something that we're concerned with, with this system being tied to the state, and security is a big issue anymore, so we're, we're looking at that to make sure our sites are as secure as possible. The fencing work has been completed as of last week. We're moving right along. They're actually working on one of the towers today. Midwest Connections removed their equipment last week. So we've got workers on one of our towers today, and they're working on dispatch now also, hopefully by the middle of November, all the dispatch equipment we have installed.
Alan, you might...
The middle of January, I'm sorry.
You might explain. I presume this has increased storage from what we currently have, and, and the purpose behind it, that it records the, all of the conversations and all the things that happen in case an event takes place, and, and how that's used?
Well, that's correct. And currently, we're only recording nine channels. This one bumps us up to 20, which is half of the actual talk paths that we have. For the system that we're looking at now, we have 44 different talk paths, or what would be considered channels. So we can do 20 of those simultaneously, which doubles our capacity. And what we also want to look at is looking into the future, what our growth is going to be, and we want to make sure that we're capturing the information that is needed to be recorded on our system.
And the retrieval will be, I presume, probably a lot easier than it currently is as well?
Yes, yep.
Did you look at any other recorders?
Yes, we did. There's actually another company even tied that Motorola has worked with and certified. And after we did demonstrations, and the quotes came in, this nice logger was just a little bit cheaper.
And I would add that this piece of equipment wasn't something that I would say was completely unforeseen. I think Alan and I relied on some assurances we were given and just assumed that it was taken care of, and kind of later in this project, we found out that wasn't the case. And so hence the need for the change order. Now, I will tell you, I'm not particularly pleased with this, but on a project of this magnitude, considering this is really the first such deviation, I, you know, I, I think we're within what we budgeted for this, so I don't anticipate any issues.
More questions? Derek, Alan? Anyone be ready to make a motion to approve change order number one in the amount of eighty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars?
Does that, does that include the ten-year plan then?
No, that'll be, the maintenance will be on top of what our maintenance was set in the contract.
I would include maintenance in your motion.
Okay.
I make a motion that we approve the change order for the NICE main IP logger in the amount of eighty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and ten years of maintenance.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Redon?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Staff reports.
I don't believe I have anything to report today.
Sheriff? Nothing? Heard from Nick, nothing to add? Alan? Tim?
On behalf of the Public Works Department, I'd like to wish you a very Merry Christmas.
As would we too then. Clerk's office, Commissioners' comments, board reports?
I have not been to anything different since the last meeting.
Not I.
I did attend the open house for the new emergency department at Ransum Memorial Health, and I was very impressed with the work that had been done there, and this is going to be a great benefit to our community and to our county. I commend the hospital staff that went behind it, and I think it's going to be a benefit to our EMS department as well, being able to transport patients there and unload them in a more controlled environment. I'd also want to say thank you to Franklin County employees who collected over six hundred pounds of food for ECAN and for Hope House in a short amount of time. Thank you very much for that generosity, and also Merry Christmas to those who are listening.
If I could just add to that, Commissioner Oglesby, I just want to let you know that you guys may or may not know, but several departments adopt families for Christmas, and the courthouse has a lot of help from other departments, and we'll be delivering our large ECAN family stuff today, which we have a family with five children. So it's, it's an undertaking to take on a family like that, and most, most people can't just adopt a family like that. So the courthouse has spearheaded that project. Joy and I, and Sandy in the Appraisers Office, the three of us get together and work on it, and lots of people contribute, not just at the courthouse, but other departments. So the Registered Deeds Office does their own also, so independent from the courthouse. So there are other things going on that the county employees are doing.
Thank you.
Rick?
Rick said everything I was going to say, so, all right. Wish everybody had a good holiday season.
Attended the hospital board meeting last evening. They moved into the new emergency room. They're lucky that, well, they ran it as a drill to practice. Needed to move an emergency room, so that qualifies as one of their trainings. It went well. They were lucky that they didn't have any patients at the time the actual move went, so they wouldn't have guessed it, couldn't have planned for that, but the one was inconvenienced. Looks, as they project the end of the year and their revenues, it does look like they're going to end up with a loss for the year from operations. They're budgeting for and projecting next year a sneaker profit. Other than that, not much to report from that meeting. You want to discuss the 27th meeting?
Yes, that's exactly. Yeah. Next week, the 27th, would you all like to have a meeting that day? The county is closed, obviously, on Christmas and the day after, so that would be our first day back. It's my understanding in discussing this with Cole that you are going to be out that day.
Believe, yeah, I could be here if I had to, but...
I don't, I don't see anything immensely pressing that would necessitate a meeting from a staff standpoint, so having said that, I'll also be here if you want to do this.
It doesn't matter to me.
You say that, sure.
I'm going to be around, so.
Something came up that you had to put an agenda together, I could be here too.
Sounds like a preference or consent to maybe hold off till next year?
Yeah.
Unless we need to, so.
I will, we'll tentatively plan on scheduling it then, or canceling it then, and if something comes up, I'll be in touch, but I don't, I don't foresee that.
And our next study session would probably be the, wouldn't be the first. Last one is the 11th. It's not going to be Christmas Day. The next Monday after that would be the first. I guess that's another thing, maybe you could play by ear if you see a need for prior to the eighth, which would be going every other week, on that pattern would be the next scheduled one.
I believe the eighth will need to be your reorganization.
Reorganization meeting, so.
I would want to have a study session on the eighth, so if we're comfortable, in addition to the reorg meeting, so if we're comfortable just planning on that being the next study session.
Do we need to, let's go ahead and schedule a reorganization meeting then? Now, there's a, it has to happen on a certain day, so long after the first, doesn't it?
Yep. I believe the eighth is the day.
Okay.
It's a Monday.
All right.
So that's when all of the new city officials will take office.
Okay.
It's on the eighth.
All right then, well, I guess we can put that on our calendar.
So procedurally, Janet, we would have a study session and then a reorg meeting?
No, we would have a reorganization meeting and then a study session.
Okay, very good.
All righty then. Nothing else? Is our motion adjourned?
I'll make a motion adjourned.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 You opposed?